Today, March 28, 2024. Roll call, please.
President Kardowski.
Here.
Trustee Service.
Here.
Trustee Paul.
Here.
Trustee Zerbal is excused. Trustee Atkinson.
Here.
Trustee Krieger.
Here.
Trustee Flukie.
Here.
Okay, please stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic, the republic's stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in it.
And please remember all our men and women in uniform throughout the world. So, on the agenda, I would like to make one change. I would like to take items nine D and nine E and move them to twelve A. After we go back into open session. Okay, I need a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the change to the agenda. And then I also need a motion to then accept the agenda as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the agenda with those changes. Number five, action on the minutes from February 27, 2024, and March 5, 2024. Closed session.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Number six, comments from the public. Must be limited to items not on the agenda. Must state your name and address. You're limited to five minutes. The board's role is to listen and not discuss the item. Personnel issues cannot be discussed nor individuals named. And the board is not able to take action at this meeting. Is there anyone who would like to talk on something not on tonight's agenda? Is there anyone who would like to talk on something not on tonight's agenda? One more time, is there anyone who would like to talk on something not on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, we will move on. Written communications and announcements. Seven A, oath of our new officer.
First, I'd like to thank the village board for allowing us to introduce our newest officer. This is Officer Dan Miller. Officer Miller came to us from the Brown County Communications Center, where he worked for over three and a half years as a telecommunicator. And he was also a supervisor for them. Officer Miller worked part-time for County Rescue as an advanced EMT for four years. We want to extend our thanks and gratitude for Officer Miller's service to our country in the greatest military branch, which is, of course, the United States Coast Guard. Officer Miller served for eight years in the United States Coast Guard active duty, four years as a reservist, and is continuing to still serve as a reservist. Dan is from Michigan. He spent time as a volunteer firefighter and a fire captain for the Huron Town Fire Rescue Department. Officer Miller received his Associate's Degree in Fire Science from Lake Superior State University, and recently received his Bachelor's Degree from the American Public University. So please join me in welcoming Officer Miller to Ashwabnon Public Safety. We are going to do a badge-pinning ceremony. Officer Miller's wife, Krista, is going to pin the badge on after the oath. So I'll give you this now. So oath of office, you have to raise your right hand. This, I don't want you dropping anybody. All right. Aye. State your name.
Aye, Dan Miller.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
To the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And I will well.
And I will well.
And faithfully discharge. And faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of public safety officer.
Of public safety officer.
For the village of Ashwabnon.
For the village of Ashwabnon.
Acting to the best of my ability.
Acting to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Officer Dan Miller.
Okay, now Patrick has an announcement.
Oh, thanks.
So I'll let him go.
Didn't know the order you wanted. I just wanted the village board to meet our new HR generalist, Megan Nolter. Noltnar, excuse me. She's hiding in the back, back there. Megan, you want to raise your hand? Megan comes, she's been here about a month now, I believe. She comes from us from UWGB. She was there for a while, and then previous before that, she was there at the Marcus Corporation. So I figured that rather than the board individually piecemealing introductions, that this would be the easiest way for everybody to meet our new HR generalist. So it's a brand-new position with the village, and Megan's often running with that. And she's doing a great job so far, and we're happy to have her. So I told her there's going to be a lot of peppering of questions for her, so if she...
Welcome. Thank you, Megan. Okay, thank you. Welcome to the village. Okay, I would now also like to say that one of the gentlemen that works at our Performing Arts Center, Steve Havlicek, was, he was the recipient of winning the BAMI Award, which is the Bay Area Music Award for Live Sound Producer of the Year. And that's, that's a really, a really great honor to have somebody from our PAC win that. So, anyway, congratulations to Steve Havlicek. It's a great opportunity. Okay, does anybody else have any other written communications? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to number eight. Action on the consent agenda. A, consider or discuss act on a permanent Class B beer license extension at the shop. B, consider or discuss act on a permanent Class B beer, Class B liquor license extension at Titletown. C, consider or discuss act on special event application for Summer Fun Days showcase. D, receive and accept the Stormwater Utility 2023 Annual Report. E, receive and accept the March 2024 Public Works Department Monthly Report. F, receive and accept the Parks, Rec, and Forestry Department Reports. G, receive and accept the Active Adult Programming Seniors Report. H, receive and accept the EAB Ash Tree Removal Project Report. I, budgeted expenditures. J, receive and accept the investment report. And K, receive and accept the February 2024 year-to-date financial reports. Does anybody want anything pulled out to discuss, or I would need a motion to approve as presented?
Could we pull eight B and eight G, please?
B.
Question on C.
Okay, so B, C, and what one?
G.
G. Okay. So I need a motion to approve all the other ones.
Still moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda as presented, except for B, C, and G. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, B. Who wanted B pulled?
That was me. I just have a couple of questions on the premise itself. I have some concerns about the football field being included in that. And I understand that Public Works, and maybe Jay, you can explain, there were some comments and some conversation in regard to the football field at that time as well. So if you could maybe share that with us.
Yeah, we, we discussed that at Public Works, and we understand that it's, it's a challenge. Obviously, there's kids out in the football field. We don't want alcohol involved with that. But they're going to be serving alcohol back in the apartment complexes for certain events and that. And we did discuss that at Public Works. And we basically came to the conclusion that we have to trust and believe in the Titletown security that's there, that they're going to be monitoring the field and making sure that we aren't having people going out onto that field and basically drinking out there, especially mingling with other kids that are out there. That, that was the main concern. It's, it's happened, I mean, let's face it, football games, that's going on all the time and that. So it's just, it was just was a concern, so I did bring that up at Public Works. I was assured at that time from, I forget, I apologize, but I forget the representative from Titletown, that they do have their security there, and they are monitoring that and watching over that. So I felt comfortable to move forward with that, since we haven't had any issues in the past.
And Brad, Brad is here, if you have any other questions.
Okay.
I was, I was at that meeting too, Tracy, and we considered just taking the football field out. But they do reserve that field for special events where there is alcohol. I mean, it's closed to the public, and it's a special event. And so you want to allow them, I mean, you can't take it out of the permitting completely, or then they couldn't have alcohol at their special event.
So if I looked at the past premise description, it sounded like for special events specifically on the football field, they had to get approval from the clerk and the public safety director, is that correct?
Public safety. Yep.
Okay, so with this change, then, will they still have to have permission for special events if they're out on the football field? Or is this just allow them to have them without getting a special event permit?
From what the chief and I talked about with Titletown is, if it's anything out of the ordinary, you know, if it's not a day-to-day thing, if it's out of the ordinary, then they will let the chief and I both know. And they need to get the chief's approval.
So it'll still be similar to what it was before? If there's any big events, they still, Brad would still have to get a permit to be able to have the event out there?
Not, not a permit, that he would just call.
Okay, just let you guys know and make you aware.
Because public safety does want to know if they need extra resources for any reason also.
Okay, so public safety is okay with it, then, the way it's set up, and no issues? And Brad, you would plan on any special, big events you would have out there? You would notify the village and after all that, okay? All right, I'll just remember my questions on that.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions on B? Okay, Gary, you had C.
I got C. The only question I have with C, has all the neighboring people around there been notified that this street's going to be closed, businesses and residents?
They will be. They will get that list and they send it.
Okay, this is common practice?
Yes.
All right, very good. That's all I had.
Okay, Tracy, you also pulled G.
Yeah, I just pulled G. I just wanted to acknowledge Rachel and Rex in the Parks Department for, first of all, this lovely brochure that went out, and hopefully, everybody got one. Also, I wanted to thank Rachel for all her hard work on the Active Adult Programming that she does. Hopefully, everybody has a chance to look at this. There's many, many Active Adult programs in here, and they've just done a great job. In Rachel's report, she talks about the fact that our, our programs right now are the most recognized in basically Northeast Wisconsin, and I think that's a great accomplishment. They've come a long way with their programs, and I would just like to thank you guys and encourage you to keep doing that, so.
I appreciate it, Tracy. I will make sure I pass it on to Rachel.
Thank you.
I would like to add to that. I just found out today that they do the taxes. ARP does the taxes. That Ashwabnon Community Center is the first one that fills up. So they're, they're filled all the way to the end of the year, or the end of the season, to do people's taxes, so that's a really great thing, too. Community Center is a wonderful amenity to our community. Okay, anybody else have any other questions? Hearing none, then I need a motion to approve B, C, and G in the consent.
Still moved. Second.
Motion and a second to approve B, C, and G in our consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, here's, we're at the action items. Nine A, consider or discuss act on a request to purchase the striker-powered stairchair model expedition for public safety. Okay, that's you, Commander Baxter.
Okay, just added the agenda. Basically, for permission to make the purchase, we received, the village of Ashwabnon received a grant through the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Mutual Insurance for, it was actually just over $4,000. And Chief Ula reached out to the insurance company and said, we're looking to make another, you know, making this purchase. The stairchair purchase is $14,830. And so he asked for additional funding from the insurance company, which they upped their grant to $9,973. Looking to make this purchase, it is a powered stairchair. I think it's going to help our EMS crews out tremendously for their lifting capabilities in homes that are multi-story, or if there's a patient down in the basement. We have manual stairchairs right now that allow us to get people up and downstairs. However, it still requires a lot of muscle and back strength to be able to do it. So we're trying to reduce the amount of injuries, and I think that's what the insurance company is also trying to do. That's why they, they put out this grant. So the balance after the grant from the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Mutual Insurance for public safety was $4,854.73. I do have, or the village has escrow accounts in our EMS Funding Assistance Program that could cover that, and our balance is approximately $10,500 in that account. So I'm just looking for approval to use the money out of the, basically, the Funding Assistance Program account to cover the, the difference from the original grant. And that would allow us to purchase this powered stairchair.
Move to approve this powered chair model, whatever the model is.
And I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of the power expedition for public safety and to the tune of 9,000, well, excuse me. We will be taking $4,854.73 out of the EMS Funding Assistance Program, correct? Okay, does everybody understand?
And the grant fundings will cover the other part, the combination of the two?
Correct, yeah, that will, 99.73 from the league. Okay.
I'll second.
Everybody understands it? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. Nine B, consider or discuss act on ordinance number 03-1-24, repealing and recreating Section 22-5-123, parant D, parant 1 of Chapter 22, Utilities, Article 5, Sewer Service, relating to amount of user charges of the Village of Ashwabnon Municipal Code. Okay. That would be...
I'll defer to Mr. Rickert on that one.
You have to repeat what I just said.
It has to repeat the title.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Anyway, so in front of, you guys see? Anyways, so what you guys have in front of you tonight is essentially a ordinance that will change our municipal code. In our municipal code, it was established back in 2006. It had a very detailed equation to formulate how you come up and calculate sewer bills within the village of Ashwabnon. In that equation, there was actually old sewer rates. Those old sewer rates were from 2006. Going through, we implemented new sewer rates. You guys may recall back in February through a two-phase approach. With that, we're kind of just doing some cleanup, making sure that all of our ordinances align with our new rates. With that, the recommendation came from Patrick to just remove that formal equation and those rates from our municipal code and just reference our fee and fine schedule. So every time that we need to adjust our rates, we're able to adjust the rates by adjusting our fee and fine schedule, not recreating our ordinance every time. So with that, this did go through Public Works and Protection. Earlier this month, they had recommended approval to come to village board, and I'll open it up to any questions.
And I think the only questions we had, Jay and I are on the same page about the cost that the people get, constituents get. I guess my thought was, why couldn't we do it in a three-part rather than two parts, so that it wouldn't be so hard on our constituents? But something has got to be done, so I guess if there's no other questions, I'll move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 03-1-24. I have to say, Gary, that I agree with you, and I, and I stated this at, at one of the other meetings. You know, these costs are going up and up and up. But unfortunately, ours sewer utility is, is, I'm going to say, bleeding money because of the cost that they have raised the rates, and we have not raised the rates. And so that's why we have to do it. It's unfortunate, but we have to do it, so. Anyway, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Aye.
Motion, motion carried. Thank you. Okay. Nine C, consider or discuss act on Resolution R 3-1-24, 2024, Tax Increment District TID Affordable Housing Extension for TID number four.
So the village of staff is requesting the village board consider extending the life of the TID number four for one year after all infrastructure and development costs are paid for within the TID. TID number four for this, for this particular purpose is set to close and terminate this year. But the municipalities are afforded an opportunity to repurpose that TID and specifically focus on affordable housing. So for one year, the TID could be extended for affordable housing purposes. What that is, it's pretty broad. There aren't any really recommendations that the staff have right now, but there had been, had been some discussions of what we can do and how we, we can repurpose the, the funds, the increment funds. But before we do so, we do need a formal resolution passed by the board if they were to consider it, to extend it one more year. So the DOR does require that the resolution, the resolution that was submitted to the board is a standard template submitted by the DOR, and pretty much just kind of plugged in the language that we need, essentially saying that 75% of it will go towards affordable housing, while the remaining will go towards the village housing stock. So it can go anywhere within the village. It's not necessarily just restricted, but it has to be purposed just for affordable housing. So with that, I'll answer any questions on the resolution. Otherwise, staff would make a recommendation to approve the resolution.
So it's just a cleanup?
In, in a way, it is a cleanup, but it is for formal approval to the DOR that we are extending our TID number four for one more year for just affordable housing.
Okay.
Okay, and if it, and Patrick, at that time, if one year goes by, then it just goes away, right?
It does. It formally terminates.
Okay.
So Patrick, just so I understand, it can be used anywhere in the village of Ashwabnon? It doesn't have to just be in TID four?
Correct.
And then it has to be for affordable housing only? Or is that 30% can be used for other things? Is that how I'm reading this?
It is. The statute is, it's kind of broad, and it, it's left that way. But essentially, yes, you're right, 75% of it has to be used just for affordable housing, the remainder for just general housing purposes. Now, there's a lot of different avenues and, and alternatives you can use, I guess, to, to kind of put it bluntly, of how you can use that affordable housing funding, whether it's for assistance with down payments or grants for first-time buyers, things like that. I know there, Milwaukee and Madison have basically like affordable housing, like they're, I think Milwaukee had like seven TIDs that were extended for affordable housing, and they have different projects and developments just for those hundreds and hundreds of properties that they, they go towards. So specific details on affordable housing can be very broad, but as long as it is purposed for that. So for example, I know that there was money for affordable housing put into streets, for street improvements, which also helps the, the local residential houses on that street. So that's just kind of an example of how this can be used, and not necessarily just focused on down payment assistance or grants, or, I mean, you certainly can, but also for, I don't know, improving one's, one's value of the house, or just putting money back into the home. So there's just a lot of different avenues that the village can take to use it.
Do we have to...
So Patrick, could, could an example be, because this was brought up when we approved the project. So the project that's on Mike McCarthy Way, we had talked about improving that and putting sidewalks to Mike Van Park. Could something like this be used for that?
Yeah, potentially, Jay, it could. I, I don't know if I can necessarily commit to it right now, but the fact that there are affordable housing opportunities in that area, there, I have seen some kind of language or municipalities that have done something like that, where they've, it's in an affordable housing environment, or an area, or an opportunity zone, as it was called, that these, that these funds can be used for something like that, streets, sidewalks, things. But I, without looking at the particulars, Jay, on that area, I can't necessarily commit to it, to it right now. But that is just a good example of how it could be used.
All right.
So as I understand it, we don't have anything in the works for this, but this keeps our options open?
Does, yes. Nothing necessary...
Affordable funds if we need to in the next year, and there's, there's really no downside to doing this. There's no downside to extending it for a year?
Well, I guess, correct, unless the board feels it's prudent to just close the TID and just kind of carry on with the other remaining TIDs. But, I mean, the, the funding of the, the increment funding is certainly going to be used for other areas rather than just in the TID. It could be used just in TID four, but it's other areas within the village. So you're extending the life of the TID for another year, using that increment it's, it's gained, you know, for this specific purpose, rather than closing it and then just kind of bringing it all back together after the TID is terminated, so.
Well, even if, even if we do this, we don't have to use the funds for that. We could still use the funds for something else, right?
The funds need to be used for affordable housing.
You...
Yes, yes. So we can't necessarily create something else inside TID four with this extension. It has to be just for affordable housing.
Do we have to do like a full-blown plan eventually for this, to say, we want to do, use it for this, this, and this? Or is it pretty open, like Kelly had said, that once the plant, projects come forth, we can use it for that, just as long as this meets the criteria?
Yeah, that, that's a good question. I don't necessarily know the specifics of that. I have seen other municipalities, like researching into this a little bit. Milwaukee's developed like a formal plan, for example, or maybe Madison has, regarding how they're going to use and allocate those affordable housing funds. But at the same time, I think there's a lot of discretion given to the municipalities when you do extend this by adopting the resolution that is provide, as long as it's available for affordable housing. There's a lot of discretion used, and I think the, the village here could certainly back up its uses for that, even though if there's not a certain plan adopted. The formality is the resolution.
Okay.
Since I see no downside, I think I'd like to make a motion to adopt the Resolution R 3-1-2024. Approve the Tax Incremental District Affordable Housing Extension for TID four in the village of Ashwabnon.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution R 3-1-24. I just wanted to say that this has actually been in place for a number of years now. Oh, gosh, one of the, Mark Williams was actually one of the trustees back years ago. Him and I talked about this, and I know that since we've talked about doing this, Trustee Atkinson has been in the village talking with Joel and Aaron about different ideas. And, and I know that it was stated that you could, you know, that, remember when we had the county guy come in, and he kind of explained how they have like no-interest loans, and you don't actually even have to do the payment on them? It doesn't get paid back until the home gets sold? We could actually create something like that. That's very administratively costly, but there's a lot of different options that we can do with this, so.
It's definitely a good use of some funds to help some areas of the village out, and definitely help some of the citizens as well. So I'm looking forward to come up with a plan as to how we can put this into motion.
Yep. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution R 3-1-2024. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, we are going to item number 10, items for next agenda. If anybody has anything, give the office a call. We'll get it on, on agenda. Number 11, closed session items. During the meeting, the village board of the village of Ashwabnon may convene into closed session pursuant, pursuant to items A and B in number 11. And I need a motion to go into closed session.
Motion to go into closed session.
Second.
Motion and a second to go into closed session, although, oh, sorry, Chris. Roll call.
Village, village president Kardowski?
Yes.
Trustee Paul?
Yes.
Trustee Atkinson?
Yes.
Trustee Service?
Yes.
Trustee, trustee Krieger will not be in the closed session, and trustee Fluke?
Yes.
Okay, we are going into closed session, thank you so very much, everybody that came.
This conference has no